All right, call the meeting to order. Damon.
Here.
Kimberly.
Here.
Diana.
Here.
Rad.
Here.
I'm also here. The meeting's been properly noted and certified?
Yes.
All right, let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Do I have a volunteer to read the mission statement?
I will.
Thank you.
The Mount Morav Area School District, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging our students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you. Moving on to 2A, approval of the presented revised agenda. So moved, seconded? Motion by Kimberly, seconded by Diana. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to 2B, approval of the October 29th, 2018 regular and exact session meeting. So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Kimberly, seconded by Rad. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, yep. All right. All right, moving on to 3A, Student Spotlight. Emma.
We're so glad to have Emma and her wonderful family here tonight. We're resuming our Student Spotlights, which we've been doing once a month, and this is one of our favorite things we get to do. Do you know the special lady in front of you here?
Ms. Johnson.
And she has just sung your praises about all the great things you do at school. Ms. Johnson, can you tell us a little bit about why Emma was selected?
Absolutely. So, um, at our Student Services meeting, we talk about kids all the time, and a lot of times we're talking about kids who are struggling in school. Well, this was my favorite topic to bring up because I said, "We need to honor a student for Student Spotlight." Hands down, her name came up as a unison, in unison with the entire crew. And let me tell you a little bit why. Emma is an outstanding student who supports all students in her classroom. I'm going to read a little bit of what her teacher said. Her teacher Courtney Harland is here tonight to help celebrate. She said, "Emma is respectful student who exemplifies leadership and kindness. She's a great listener and is always focused in class. She tries her best on all her work and she takes pride in everything she completes. Emma is caring and compassionate and goes out of her way to help her peers. She is flexible and understanding and do whatever it takes to help make her friends and teachers happy. This sweet girl sets a wonderful example for all students and it is truly an honor to have her in my class. Emma goes above and beyond for her friends and this community is lucky to have such a star student."
Wow. So, one of my favorite stories is, I was in her art class one day, and there were some kids. Ms. G has just a lot of amazing projects going on all at once, and sometimes kids need a little more help in getting started or focused or getting their supplies. And I think there were three different occasions Emma would skip up to Ms. G and basically say, "What do you need me to do next?" And off she would go skipping to go help somebody, whether they needed glue, whether they needed some ideas or getting started. She was working on her own things but gladly jumping in to help others as well, and that's just who she naturally is. It's pretty amazing.
Do you think if we asked her nicely, she'd be willing to take a picture with us?
Emma will take a picture with us.
Oh, man, that's wonderful. And you know, Mrs. Harland is also a very special lady, isn't she?
She is.
And she's taking time to be here tonight because she cares about you as much as we do, so do you think we could include Mrs. Harland in the picture too?
Oh, awesome, yes.
I told you, right?
For one. Madam President, would you be willing to join us in the picture? Could I trouble you to take the picture? Thank you. What are you saying? How are we over here? And Mom and Dad, how about you join us? That'd be all right?
Emma is also a Girl Scout. She's in my troop. Yeah. I never know where she goes. All right, moving on to 3B, school news.
Good evening, board members. I'm so pleased to introduce this fine lady right behind me. This is Megan Leonard. Megan is the Administrative Assistant to Sarah Straka's team in her Human Instruction, and she's graciously filled in for us tonight as Jackie is going to see grandchild and daughter and Denver. So, well, we'll take it nice and slow in giving you the names as people are motioning and seconding, okay? We do have a special night coming up this week, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We have our musical coming up, so if you haven't got your tickets, I still think there's some good seats to be had, particularly for Saturday afternoon's performance. And I want to extend a note of appreciation to all of our fall sports teams, whether they made it to postseason play or not. They continue to make us proud, both off the court, off the field, but also in the classrooms. Our students continue to score very high marks in school while also continuing their studies so well. In fact, we have our first girls' basketball game a week from tomorrow night, so we're already firing up for winter sports already, so I'm sure you'll be pleased to hopefully take in a game room, too, yet this year.
Any other school news?
I share. The ELCPC had 100% participation in parent teacher programs.
Okay, oh, that is awesome. Top that, middle school.
101%.
Some kid twice.
But we've got some good stuff going on. Wrestling basketball started. We get the first viewing of the musical on Wednesday afternoon. Our seventh and eighth graders get the matinee, sort of their dress rehearsal thing, so good to be in second quarter already. Not crazy, but we're a couple weeks into it, 10 days into it, so it's good.
And any other school news? All right, moving on to 3C, citizens' comments. Anybody sign up? No, any citizens' comments? All right, moving on to 4A, personnel transactions. Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Mr. Nice. Motion by Diana, seconded by Rad. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on to 5A, financial reports.
Motion to approve.
Seconded. Motion by Rad, seconded by Diana. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. 6A, school showcase. Ms. Johnson, I don't know if you can top Emma.
I know. All right. So, I just, the caveat of this is we're only two months in, so all of my updates are based on only two committee meetings per goal, so we're trudging away and I'm pretty proud of where we're at, but definitely I'm excited when we get back here in spring and I can show you a lot more of what's been going on. So, I'm going to start off with our literacy goal. There's just a refresher of what it is and why we put it as such. So, some of the things that I'm sharing with you today are the action steps that we're taking to help us attain this goal. So, one of the things we're doing is providing professional development on identified skill deficits based on PALS, based on math, based on in-class performance. We found that these are the key areas, letter fluency, letter sound fluency, and sight words are our key areas we need to focus in on. So, here's what we're doing about it. We're really adding to our Title I push-in model. We now have two classroom teachers per building that are working hand-in-hand with our Title I reading specialists, where they're going into the room. It is amazing to see the growth in both of them when I've been in the rooms and watched this co-teaching model. It's what our kids are getting and what they're getting from each other as colleagues, I mean, truly PLC model. You shouldn't be doing this by yourself. And that concept of arming to teach our children is, it's pretty amazing. We also are doing the same with some training going on with our special ed. I have a kindergarten teacher and a special ed teacher co-teaching right now, and again, what's happening in that room and how students are all benefiting from both of those professionals is outstanding. We also are using PD time during our team meetings or our staff meetings to provide different ideas for teachers to use during our Tier Two, because we know we can't keep doing the same thing with the kids. They're just not, all of a sudden, get it. We've got to take different approaches to help kids with the skills that they're struggling in. We implemented FastBridge, which is, we're using at our level right now as a screener and then also as a progress monitoring tool. We are going to be learning from the IC as they've now implemented FastBridge in a more broader sense for assessment and seeing if this might be a nice replacement for math potentially down the road, so we'll look more for things to come later. Again, looking at what we're doing differently. Teachers are working together to identify different ways and routes of supporting those kids who need intervention. So, some of the bi-weekly progress monitoring tools, we're going to be looking at, such as FastBridge, that we'll implement at some point for Tier Two kids, being consistent and implementing our strategies with fidelity. So, those are conversations happening at the team meetings. In math, so this one I'm kind of most excited to talk about tonight, although all of them are great, but this has been an area we haven't had a goal in many years, and our data still shows our kids do really well in the area of math compared to reading. However, we, there's always ways to do things differently, and we did identify through our data areas that we needed to focus, especially numbers and operational thinking. So, one of the things that we talked about, like in Education Committee tonight, is how can we better identify how our kids are progressing, other than just a twice-a-year math assessment? So, one of the things we're looking to do is develop short, quick, one-on-one assessments that teachers can give within the classroom that would be quick checks of skills. But in order to do that, we really need to get to those essential learning pieces and identify truly what kids need to know, and then have those common assessments that teachers can talk around. I put this under construction because we're not there yet, but we're starting to have really great discussions. I brought a copy of something that we've added. This is giving teachers, especially in the area of numbers and operational thinking, different approaches to add, to supplement everyday math. So, our new math interventionist, Ashlyn Burr, has been amazing. She came with a wealth of knowledge and experience, and so every month, our staff gets this amazing newsletter on different things to interject. This is a live doc that actually she sends it to them with hyperlinks that they can go to. In our math committee, though, we're finding out that our teams don't have enough time or they feel that they can't dive into literally this whole database of resources she's providing for them. So, our math committee came up with an amazing idea. So, on January 2nd, when we come back from break, that Wednesday after-school is game night. So, what the team is doing is looking ahead in everyday math at where we're going to be at approximately in January. They're going to create the games of some of those great things to get kind of teasers, to get teachers really excited about the resources that Ashlyn's providing, and when we, after we play those games, they'll be handed all the resources to make those games happen in the classroom. So, again, great wealth of resources and opportunities, and we're going to take the opportunity to make sure teachers know these resources are in front of them and ready for them to use. For our well-being goal, we have two parts to it, a student well-being piece and then obviously our staff well-being piece. So, you can see we've got three points under our goal. Again, two of them about students and one about staff. So, the first one I'll talk about is the one we've continued to have, and that's earning those celebrations, pointing out the positives, truly being a PBIS school. And so, we continue to keep that goal of 15 gold token celebrations. We have now earned four out of 15 already. Tomorrow's pajama day, so this is the perfect night to be out late because I can just roll on up in my jammies tomorrow and come to school, but the PC's celebrating pajama day tomorrow. We felt like we couldn't let this goal go. We really need to put those motivators in front of people to continue to point out the positives. So, we've continued to keep that goal in place. This was based on our implementation of PBIS. Thanks, Steve, for clicking into this. So, actually Katie Ginnanen, who's our Dean of Student, she's over here to my right. She helped our team come up with a really great refresher training for staff. When we did some serious pondering this summer over PBIS, we realized that we had started to put our focus in the wrong direction. We continue to talk about the chart, the chart, the chart for our Tier Two kids. PBIS Tier Two, or for our check-in, check-out, it's not about the chart. It's actually about all the feedback you give kids. That's truly the intervention. The chart is the way you keep track of the data. So, we really put our eggs in one basket of reminding ourselves and our staff about not putting the focus on the chart, but truly on what the intervention is all about. So, there's a quick peek at some of the training that we went through in that first staff meeting.
For you guys, it's done.
It was very well done. We have Viking huddles all the time, whether it's about the mess that was made in the bathroom or if we have a system-wide piece that we need to address. We, teachers have, they have to put it in their schedule, a weekly Viking huddle, and they address, maybe they look at their class expectations and decide if they want to keep going with a specific focus and set goal as a class. I found out last week that there was a class that was, they didn't get any of the PBIS awards last month, and so they went back and they had a huddle about what area they wanted to focus most on, which trophy did they really want. It was a lunchroom trophy. They won it this month. So, again, those conversations they have about, well, what do we got to do to get it? And then what do we have to display to get it? And they heard it. Pretty awesome. One of our other action steps, our data shows that we're ready for more training. We were recognized as a bronze school for, bronze award recipient through the Wisconsin RTI Center, and that's based on all of the surveys that we take for our staff that truly look at fidelity of PBIS in our schools, Tier One and Tier Two. We're definitely ready for some Tier Three training, so. The other part of our student goal was student connectedness. We know it's so important for students to feel that they have connections to adults, and so we set a goal around that. We want 100% of our kids to feel that they have a connected, that they're connected to an adult at school. So, Brooke Running, our amazing guidance counselor, ran with this. She put this within her guidance program and did a lesson around, and then met with each student one-on-one to identify who they're connected to in the school. And so, you can see the raw data there. 469 students out of 478 could name one school adult that they could go to if they had a problem. But that meant, we still have 1.88% of kids that don't, and those are the ones we're worried about. So, we're developing lessons to figure out how to best support those kids in feeling connected to adults in our school. I love this goal because it really ties in well with the, what the IC is now doing, and that's student connectedness. So, at our level, we really want adult connectedness. Now, that next natural step is that student connectedness piece. So, we'll survey our kids again in spring, and we're hoping to bring 100% to as a goal completed. The last one's about staff. You know, going to the PLC this summer, PLC Institute, it really brought me back to ground level. We have a lot of great things going on, and we have amazing staff, but truly, to be the best possible PLC or best possible team we can be, we really need to kind of break down what we can do to be better as a team. And so, I just had staff complete a survey. It's, it's not the nicest name, but it's the Five Dysfunctions of a Team. And so, what it allows the team to do is each team took this, and then they'll get the data, and it'll determine where you start. So, it's kind of a pyramid model approach, and so it'll tell you if you should start at trust, because if you don't have trust, then you can't have conflict, like natural healthy conflict, but you have to be vulnerable. And it's showing, what it'll do is it'll show us what, where we need to start in different activities we need to do in each team to build upon those skills to be as functional and productive as possible. So, that's where our teams are working on right now. So, my goal on that is to really bring to light what we can be doing to be healthier as teams and be more productive as teams.
This was awesome.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rachel, please extend our gratitude, not only to you, but the rest of your team who helps you move that beautiful organization forward. You guys are doing such a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 6B, referendum update. Mr. Huffman and Mr. McMillan, you're up.
Thank you for being here. Yeah.
Good evening.
I think I will let Ted give the update on the High School Edition Kramer Project over there, and I'll go through all the other things that we have going on with the referendum project. So, I'll start here at the middle school. So, as you know, the construction project of the addition was mostly completed some time ago. We've still got two items that are left there, and we're looking to accomplish those items right after Christmas break, or right after Christmas, actually, December 26th. And that is, there's installation of a new glass fire-resistant door into the office area, and then there's also a coiling door that separates the big opening between the new addition and the existing office that didn't quite fit right, so that got reordered and will be replaced at that time. Otherwise, that project has wrapped up, and financially, we've got, we've paid out the majority of the $550,000 that was allocated to that project under Kramer Brothers contract. Roofing project, I think I reported the last time that we were done, but still had some punch list items to accomplish. So, we had a big group walk around on the roof, Bray, Huffman Facility Development, district staff, did an extensive look at the roof and created a punch list for which Malle Roofing came back and has accomplished the tasks that were put on that punch list. We weren't quite happy with everything. We had some questions about one component of the installation, and we actually asked Firestone, the roofing manufacturer, to come take a look at it and give an opinion on it. They did that, and they said it was well within proper installation guidelines, so we had a question with it, but it was good to have that manufacturer come and delay our fears on that. Also, at the middle school, we have some additional work scope items that we're pursuing. There is some exterior ponding issues that have become more evident through the late summer and early fall rains, and we've asked our civil engineer to create a design to sort of re-sculpt the landscape up adjacent to the building. We can get that priced and then bring that back to the board and see if that's something you want to pursue. We're also looking at some masonry concerns with the building, some areas where there is some water getting into the building. We've asked Bray Architects to provide a design that could subsequently be priced. And then finally, we're looking at the metal roof, because here we addressed only the flat rubber membrane roof, and also through the course of the heavy rains, we discovered some failings with that metal roof. So, we're looking at options that will range from repairs to different conditions of that roof to full replacement of that metal roof, and again, we'll be pursuing pricing for that. If I jump over to the high school and talk about the, not the addition, there are some other things that have been happening there. As you know, you approved really three components of improvements to the auditorium. Long ago, we accomplished lighting upgrades with main stage theatrical. We then addressed audio upgrades with Clearwing Communications. And on November 12th, we were waiting for a period where the auditorium could be open for work again, and that window is November 12th through, I can't recall, it's about five days there. We'll be accomplishing video upgrades with IDS out of Middleton. The modular buildings, we'll jump to that. It's been a long saga there, and I'm sure you're privy to some of it, probably not all of the painful details that we've been wrestling with on a number of conference calls and remediation work out there. Dr. Solerno is now an expert on modular buildings.
I don't know about that.
So, I chime in here at any point, but there've been issues concerned with respect to air quality there. We've had some remediation of mold that was discovered. We've looked at areas for water infiltration at windows. We've looked at cleaning of the HVAC units and the amount of outside air that gets introduced to the space versus recirculated air. We've looked at the controls on those air handlers. We've looked at CO2 monitoring within the building. There really has been an extensive amount of investigation into these buildings that we don't own, the buildings that we lease. And up to this point, the owners of the building, Innovative Modular Solutions, has stepped up and taken responsibility and been a partner with us in pursuing repairs to that space. Can you add to that?
Well said.
I think I'll stop there and let you talk about the addition.
All right. High School Edition is moving right along, so the weather has hurt a couple different, you know, facets of the project. We're trying to get the insulation, it's a spray-on insulation system, we're trying to get that on right now, but as it rains, it takes at least three days for that to dry out before we can actually apply it. So, every three days or so, we get a little bit of rain, so that's not helping us there. So, probably about two weeks behind on that front, but what we've done is we just shifted tasks, so we're actually pouring concrete. So, we've got the better part of the second floor, so I think all of area E and then coming back to B and C, so everyone knows that it's, but basically, E is where the new building intersects with the old 200 wing of the school, so that area there, the second floor, concrete is pretty much poured out through that area. We've started some of the interior work, interior slab work, that is. All of the foundations are in, so we're in great shape given, you know, weather and everything else that we'll be seeing come here. The majority of the steel is, actually, all of the steel is up for the new addition area, not the new café area. We have some structural deck that has to go on for the roof yet, but we'll be starting roofing work here coming up pretty soon. Thinking, oh, we're actually supposed to start pouring slabs next month. No, I'm sorry, three weeks, right about Thanksgiving. I'm not used to it being November yet, so. So, that's when we're actually supposed to start pouring them, but we've already been pouring them. So, what we're hoping for is a little bit of a dry spell before the snow spell that allows us to get the insulation work done, so. It's just a unique system. It's a fantastic system, but it just needs the right conditions to work with it. We've got, there's probably about five different pricing scenarios that we're going through right now, multiple project supplements. There is facilities and grounds meeting, I think, that date for Thanksgiving. So, we are planning on meeting next week. It's not formally scheduled yet, but to run through all that information with the entire team, so that when they come to the Buildings and Grounds meeting, that they can be ready to report and, you know, the grounds committee can make a recommendation to the board. If you don't mind me just tagging along, thanks so much to the both of you for such a nice overview. It is the 26th, is our Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting. At that time, we've asked the good folks at Kramer Brothers to give us a pricing structure on everything that you've heard, with the exception of the... with the exception of the, is it the steel roof? And the mortar?
Masonry.
Masonry. So we'll have an update on that second half of that plaza and the southwestern corner of the tech ed area here that we're talking about with the ponding. And then what's the third item that we've got coming to us that night?
I'm sorry, did you say the plaza?
The plaza.
Yeah.
Well, we took care of the electricity already in tech, so I think we're good there. So... Yeah, so that'll be in a fortnight. And assuming if the board's committee is so inclined, then we would likely ask the full board on December 3rd, I think is that meeting, for the board to please consider those additional projects. It might be helpful to note that this would be not requiring us taking on that additional last barrow. This would be accomplished through decisions that we've had through our referendum project.
And when will we have the recommendation on the roof, on the metal roof?
Was it end of January?
Yeah, we're trying to line ourselves up for the optimum time for bidding roof. If you approve that, to proceed, and that would be that we'd want to get out to bid in late February.
Thank you.
There is some advantage, Mr. Heiss, to have the Kramer Brothers folks already on site when it comes to, because they do their own mortar work and all of their, as I understand that.
Oh, masonry.
Yeah, masonry. So, gosh, it sure would be great. We're anticipating hopefully a favorable result in that bid.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, moving on to six C, ex officio board or administrator to the Chamber of Commerce.
Board members, so pleased to have the opportunity to serve as a member of the school community on the Chamber of Commerce this year. This has been a voting member, but as you may have recalled, this was a one-year kind of a position as they were preparing to kind of re-establish their procedures. And they're looking to have an ex officio member of the board, board and/or administration, moving forward. And so, Rob, you're also part of that chamber, an active member of the executive board. I don't know, maybe if there's anything else to help paint the picture for the board in this regard?
No, I think you painted it well.
So to that extent, thank you. To that extent, then, maybe I'm just looking to see if the board would like me to continue in that role, or if, you know, many of you know that this is such a great way to connect with other people within the community and build friendships and partnerships that I wouldn't want to take anything away from you, though, either, if you wanted to. I typically meet on a Thursday morning, 7:15-ish. It's either the first, they're changing every other month or so, with the exception of November and December, it's every month.
So it'd be seven meetings, seven meetings a year, because we're going to every other, every other month. And if you particularly, if you serve as an ex officio member, you're not required to chair a committee. We're, no board member chairs a committee anymore. That was one of the, really, time-consuming. Could be very interesting, but it was very time-consuming as well. So you're essentially obligated to seven meetings.
Does anybody have a burning desire to be the ex officio member of the chamber?
And the other thing I should say is that the only real requirement is that you're on the agenda every, every meeting to give the, give the board a report on what's been going on with our, with our schools, with the board's activities and what's been going on with the schools.
All right, it's all you.
Can I ask a question first before we decide to throw the set you once again? Do you have the capacity to continue in this regard? Is it something that you feel that is taken away from your other duties that you have?
To me, I see it as one of my duties and one of my responsibilities is to build friendships and community partnerships with, with folks. So it's a pleasure to do. But here again, when they said they wanted a representative from the board or administration, I didn't want to immediately be presumptuous and take it then without maybe somebody else saying, hey, how about me? So I'd be happy to, but then again, I also don't want to take it away from anybody else.
I'm just fine. I just don't, I just don't want to overburden you in your role. I want you to be able to do the work that you need to do, but if this is something that you see as your role and something that you enjoy and you feel like it helps you in your role, then I don't want to take that away from you. I just, I just want to make sure that you're not overburdened by adding this and continuing in this role.
Thanks for being so thoughtful. I feel good about it, if you guys feel good about it. And I can continue to update you as to what's going on with the work of the chamber. They're really doing some great things.
All right, it's all you. All right, six D, information and advocacy report.
Hi.
Hello.
Feels like it's almost...
It's a nice...
Feels like we've got a three-hour meeting. Okay. So, thank you. As in the last report that I did, was it last one? You received not only the written report, but also a presentation. So hopefully you had a chance to look at the written report. The presentation during this time, I will touch on highlights, aspects, and help decipher some of the charts and graphs that I provided. So in November, we're looking at, again, the goal of graduating lifelong learners. Is that the same goal the board called it, we looked at last month? With this objective, we're looking at those students who have access to and who are completing professional certifications or workplace experiences. So that could be anywhere from professional certification in different areas all the way to apprenticeship, work experience, and work co-op. So we'll dive right in and talk about some of our certification opportunities that we have for students. The first one we have is the CNA licensing program. Our school of work coordinator, Penny Thompson, has been working with various organizations, various entities, to make sure students have the opportunity to receive their CNA licensing while they're going to school in Montclair, because then it'll just help them when they, if they decide to go into nursing college, or if they want to go into the CNA programs at other places to have a job opportunities. With the chart here, we see it creeps all the way up to 2014, 15, and then drops down. And as I noted in the written report, because the Madison campus, the Madison College campus closed, the, well, the west end location, I don't know, students now can drive to the Churax Campus near the regional airport. So they closed that campus in 2016, and that's where we see that drop. So we've had less opportunity and less closeness for students to travel. So therefore, they have to seek the certification elsewhere. Now, you may be thinking, well, we have Ingleside, but Ingleside also has been offering these courses, but they offer to their staff first, and there's not always been a placement for kiddos. But I think that's something that I definitely want to reach out to their director on to see how we can get more of our kids going to Ingleside for certification, which is two blocks away, three blocks away from the high school. So that's a goal that I'll be having and working on with Penny Thompson to see if we can somehow bridge that partnership. I know that Ingleside and other healthcare areas are paying for local workers, so hopefully we can help them out with that, too.
Is the south side M A T C, or, sorry, Madison College, is that a done deal? Is that, do you know the date for that?
I do not.
Or is that still in proposal? Do you know?
I don't know.
I haven't heard anything on it in a really long, there was a lot of news articles about it.
So I can't remember if it's dead or subtle?
Yeah, I don't...
When Ingleside doesn't work out and when students driving to the Churax Campus does not work out, Penny Thompson has reached out to private CNA certification organizations or courses. So that's where we sometimes are able to get students in as well. This scenario, I think we can, we can grow on. You just have to make sure we find the right partnerships. So Middle College is another pathway for kiddos, a dual-credit career pathway, where high school seniors who want to advance their career in either healthcare, manufacturing, or culinary arts can go to Madison College and finish out their high school career, receive credits for high school graduation, but also receiving credits then for Madison College. It used to be open to juniors and seniors, and that was prior to 2013, 14. So you see, we do have our highest level at four in 2012, 13, because that was juniors and seniors. But then there was a change in the grant structure for this program to only having seniors. And that's why you see a dip, but leveling out about two or three kiddos a year we have from 2016. There are some eligibility requirements that show, like I said, interest in a specific career cluster. There's some income eligibility. Students would also have to have some other criteria that maybe would set them back in life or other things like that. So it's a specific group of students that they're trying to help advance with these dual-credit programs. The last opportunity under this section is a fire recruit academy, and this is like hot off the presses. So I'll hand this out to you. So the Fire Recruit Academy is a five-credit course that the school district is going to partner with Madison College and the Montclair Fire Department. And the Michael Power Fire Department approached us with this opportunity last year around this time. However, they didn't really have a place to hold the course necessarily. And, you know, we don't have a place to hold the course this year. So it worked out well. But we're looking to partner with the Fire Department, actually, starting second semester this year, where we would have a fire academy. Madison College professors would come to the Madison Fire Department and offer courses of 200 hours of firefight instruction. And with the new safety building opening in February, students can then take these courses in this new facility, and they could travel even less to the Madison Churax Campus to do the hands-on pieces. Bearable has a similar model where students in their version of the Fire Academy work with the local college there, and students from Bearable High School go and take their courses, and they can get certification. What's nice for us is that we get, obviously, local firefighters and kids having that career pathway and trying it out, but then we also get reimbursed that act 59 money. So we have to pay a certain amount to Madison for these students to take these courses. But then, once they become seniors and they graduate, we get reimbursed that money, just like we get reimbursed for apprenticeship. So it's a very similar model. I believe seniors, I believe get $500, too, for completing, graduating, and moving on with the course. What else do I want to say about this? So it's great for our community, great for our Fire Department, great for our kiddos to have this new opportunity, and we're starting it in two months. So it's a neat partnership.
Is it four seniors specifically?
Uh, no, no, it could be four juniors as well, anyone 16 or over.
Okay.
Yep. I believe we just had, well, we didn't have, but I think, believe, three of our juniors took the equivalent program strictly through the Fire Department. It wasn't a joint piece like this. But we are, but the Montclair Fire Department will reach out to surrounding communities to bring in an offer list to their kiddos so we can have a larger enrollment class in this. So I think it'd be great for Roundabout and Bellwell and Groton and those school districts as well to have this here versus kids traveling to Madison College to do it. So it's a very neat thing for our community. Any questions on those opportunities before we get into more of the work experience piece?
Have we considered partnering with Upland Hills and Dodgeville on the CNA stuff? I know they have a school in there.
We have not, but that'd be great.
Because then you don't have to go all the way to the east side of Madison. They don't have to go to the Belt Line and crazy, run a row construction.
Yeah. That's a good, that's a really good observation, a good point. I will talk with Mrs. Thompson about that.
Yeah, because they know there's a school because I had to go to an appointment, and you'd have to go down and through the school. I was like, there's a school in here and around it. That place is huge. Huge.
And you know Upland Hills is in our community, that we've got some great partnerships with them and John Wright with the clinic. So that's something, that's a really good point. Thank you for that. Any other suggestions?
It does feel like nine o'clock.
Not yet. Okay, so let's talk about work experience and work experience outside the classroom. So Montclair High School, we have three opportunities. Work experience, work co-op, or cooperative, and youth apprenticeship. I finally figured out the difference of these like last year. So work experience, you don't have to be connected to a particular occupational area. I sort of think back to maybe when I was in high school, I was on her basketball team. She was released from school to go work at Walgreens for an hour or two a day. That work experience is not tied to maybe a career pathway or a content area or a class that you're taking. Work co-op, though, is tied to a particular field, career, interest area, and it's for one or two hours a day. And most likely, the whole student are also taking a class in the high school for that content area. The most well-known or the highest enrollment, what we have is the business ed co-op, where students take Penny Thompson's business co-op course, and then she teaches them the work skills, business skills, interviewing, those kinds of general business skills. And then they go out and work for the bank or the chiropractor, whoever in town. Whereas youth apprenticeship, they take a course and they learn that content specific to that class. So for example, we have kiddos who travel to McFarland to take the construction course. So they're taking that course in that specific field, and then they have apprenticeship in that specific field area. Does that make sense between the three? Awesome. So let's talk about each of them. So work experience, we've seen a decline over the past eight years or so. We have two kinds of work experience in Montclair. The simplest way I could define them was work experience, that regular education piece, and then work, that work experience transition piece with Mary Metello Sutter, who runs that program and works with kids as they transition from school into work and getting the work skills and life skills as well. So that top role, we've seen a decline, but that is because, as you probably saw later in the report, youth apprenticeship is growing. And we want students to have their work experience tied to a particular career pathway or a content area or a class versus going out and working wherever and not having as tight of an understanding or as tight of a documentation following them as they're working. That's a work experience. Dave Reed, I think, you used to do, you used to supervise work experience. Do you have to keep track of your participation and attendance? That's almost it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just check in with them.
Correct.
Sorry to cut you off.
No, 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 that's correct. We did, we did, we did have a log that they, they submitted every week.
Yeah. So then we step up in the requirements, the criteria, to that work co-op piece, where students are in a career field and they take a technical education course that aligns with that career field. So like I said, we have the business occupations. Pam Allen runs a ed work co-op piece, where she goes out and supervises students related to the ed field in a work, work co-op piece. If you remember, the Board of Education, last spring, summer, the months have been flying. But we also now have added a tech ed work co-op and pulling back on that work experience piece and trying to tie it more with criteria attached to the work co-op tech ed piece. So finally, the most intense, I guess you want to say, or the most closely tied to a career pathway is the youth apprenticeship. So I did not include this cycle within the reports, but I did include it in this presentation, because it just shows you the general legal process for students who's trying to gain employment and keep employment in youth apprenticeship. So Penny Thompson, our youth apprenticeship coordinator, will connect students with potential employers and career pathways. And she'll help set up the interviews and help a student with their resume and get that, that moving. So but it's up to the employer to hire the student. So they could say, yep, or no. Maybe we have three students vying for the same opportunity at an employer. And that employer will then choose the student that they believe would be best for their company. So the student is employed by the employer, they get paid by the employer and all those kinds of things. So they are an employee. But the employer is also then supposed to provide them a mentor, a worksite mentor that works alongside them and guides them with that, excuse me, on the job training piece. With that, then, the employer, the mentor, is in charge of making sure the students are getting the specific skills for that apprenticeship and the competencies. And just like any employee, a student would have a workforce performance evaluation. So they really run that, that full cycle of what is to be an employee within a specific career field. They must complete 450 hours in one year. They do receive credit, and they do receive pay for this, and they do receive that work experience of, wow, I want to do this rest of my life, or heck no. that work experience of, wow, I want to do this rest of my life, or heck no, I can't do this rest of my life, I'm barred to this. So it's a nice balance for students. So what are our business act and youth apprenticeship opportunities and the enrollment or the number of students in it? As you can see in the bottom total row, our work experience, I'm sorry, our business act and youth apprenticeship numbers have grown, they've grown a little lot the past couple of years. Mrs. Thompson has done a great job connecting kids with employers and finding the global opportunities that are available to them. So students get that real work experience, but then we also get to reimburse with Act 59 dollars as well, for students that we can then put back into the program to continue to enhance it. The last chart, I believe, is just a visual depiction of the increase that we've seen since 2012, 2013, of number of students taking management or youth apprenticeship, and making sure students understand that this opportunity is there for them. And my last slide, I believe, is just a shout-out to Mrs. Thompson. I could not compile this information without her, so she's a great asset to our community and to our school, and she's really helped grow this program. That's all I have, so do you have any questions for this section, or are you good to go?
So do the kids get paid and, like, from the employers in each one of those, and they get credit?
Okay. Yep.
I think that's why you're seeing a decrease in the work experiences and more growth in the youth apprenticeship, because you can get more bang for the buck. You're, you're so right about all the work that Penny has been putting into this, and do you happen to recall the amount of money the district received back in Act 59 dollars? Was it a close to $20,000 plus?
Yeah.
So these are significant dollars that we think eventually we can just allow for the germination of other kinds of great opportunities for our kids to occur. So a tip of the hat to her, and of course, our students and our partners, very, very outstanding.
Do you have any questions in this session? Let me know if you will.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Madam President, may I just ask a quick question of the board? This is now the second Information and Advocacy Report that we've done, and we want to make certain that it's meeting your needs in terms of assessing the, where we are in our strategic plan, and if it's not, we certainly want to be able to adjust accordingly. Really, we see this as a vehicle for us to demonstrate our accountability to the board, to the public. This is what you were looking for, or would you like to be seeing something else in a different format?
I think this is great. I like the chewable chunks, and then if I want to dig in, I can get into that whole report and...
I do, too.
Yeah.
So one of the things we talked about just as a team was, maybe we're going to revisit our calendar and our schedule if it's okay with you, because what we're finding is, bless Sarah's heart, she's got three Information and Advocacy Reports in a row, and those take some time to put together.
Well, this was the point I was going to make, I was thinking about what Diana asked you just a moment ago, and, you know, these reports are terrific for us, but, I mean, I don't think they should necessarily be consuming, so, you know, if there needs to be some adjustment in, in length, so that this isn't all-consuming, I'm totally comfortable with that, but they're very, they're terrific, they're very useful, but they don't need to be all-consuming.
I'd agree, unless it is pertinent to something that we're going to be voting on, you know, on the, on the overall board calendar, then I would want to make sure that those kind of align, but otherwise, I think, you know, move them around as you feel they need to be moved.
That'd be great, thank you so much for that feedback. And again, a tip of the hat to Director Instruction Strucker, really done an outstanding job on these, not only reports, but the presentations, well done.
Very good.
All right, moving on to 7A, Consideration of Boards, December 17th meeting. So there was some discussion about possibly canceling our December 17th meeting. What does everyone think?
It's the week before, it's the Monday before Christmas, right? Monday before Christmas Eve?
Yes. I believe that is a correct statement. But I have to look.
It is.
Yes.
It's my wedding anniversary.
Oh. When do the kids, when are the kids out? When's the last day?
February?
They're a whole week, right?
Friday.
The full Friday, okay.
Yeah, they're a whole week.
I would personally vote to keep it, just because it's quite a cushion from Christmas, and I'm sure we'll have more to discuss, but otherwise, it's just a longer meeting the next day.
Yeah, is there a, so we would be off, there's a fifth Monday, so the next meeting wouldn't be for?
Till the 7th, so we would go...
January 7th.
About almost a month.
It would be a month.
It'd be best to keep it.
Okay. Do I need a motion?
Because it's starting the schedule then, okay, great.
All right, 8A, Citizens' Comments. Seen none. There's a list of our growing future agenda items. If anybody sees anything, wants to add anything, let us know. Next is the schedule of next meetings.
Board members, you'll notice that the meeting for November the 19th at 4:30 has been pulled, so we'll just have the standard safety and wellness, excuse me, at 6:00 PM and 7:00 PM respectively.
All right, so now we'll go into Closed Session, contemplating Closed Session for Section 19.85, Part 1, N, Part, at, N, Part, of Wisconsin statutes for considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories, or disciplinary data for specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personal problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons where Paragraph B applies, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data or involved in such problems or investigations. Need a roll call, vote. Dan, Damon?
I need a motion.
Oh, I need a motion first.
Some move.
Second.
Motion by Diana, second by Rod. Now I need a roll call. Damon?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Rod?
Yes.
I'm also, yes, we'll take five minutes. One question.